And now I'd like to call the March 7th East Line Board of Education Regular Meeting, call it to order. And if everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So now we're open for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board? I don't see any. Is there anyone on soon? Would like to address the board public comment? Comment closed. So first order business is approval of minutes. So we have the minutes from the February 7th Board of Ed Regular Meeting to approve. Anyone want to make a motion? Or are there any corrections?
I would like to make a motion for the minutes of February.
A second it.
Four.
Oh. Talked too quickly. I second it.
The board, the minutes say four, me and Dennis's seven. February 7th.
Yeah.
So I would like to approve the minutes of the correction of the.
Anyone second? I think someone did.
I did.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Oppose? And abstain? Next, we have the minutes from the February 28th Board of Education Special Meeting for Public Hearing to approve. Any corrections? Hey, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 28th.
No second.
All those in favor? Now the guy opposed abstain. Okay.
I was late.
Okay. Still abstains. All right. So that. Minutes are approved. And then we're on the minutes for the February 28th, 2020 Board of Education Special Meeting. Any corrections to those minutes? Hey, do I hear a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our regular February 20 meeting.
All those in favor? Oh, second. Thank you. So your second?
Second.
Thanks, Candace. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Abstain? Minutes are approved. Okay. Oh, Dan. Yeah, Dan is our selectman. Dan, do you want to provide an update?
Joining us.
Yes. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. Well, first I want to, I want to thank Superintendent Newton for the great presentation the other night of your budget at our Board of Selectmen meeting. Thank you. We've received it and we've passed our, the whole budget on to the Board of Finance. We are still reviewing the Board of Ed budget and we will make suggestions to the Board of Ed and also forward those to the Board of Finance. As you may know, we have a committee for our ARP funds and they are coming up with proposals that they'll present to the Board of Selectmen. And we will be reviewing those. And to the extent that it has an impact on either the capital plan or the budget, we will also make suggestions to the Board of Finance on that as well. Other than that, I don't have anything further to report. But again, thank you for the great presentation the other night.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is always a good day for special reports because we both, we get both middle school and high school updates. And we do really enjoy them. So we're going to start with the middle school. So Nick and Dylan.
All right. I'll start on Nicholas, by the way. So I have a thing to go over and I'm just going to start with the clubs. So so far this year, the clubs are definitely, definitely thriving. There are nine different activities, nine different activities have concluded, including inter, including interscholastic sports with approximately 240 participants. The boys didn't have the best season, but the girls did fantastic, going undefeated in the regular season and winning the championship game. There are also 14 activities, 14 active activities involving approximately 350 students. But that's not all. Six different spring activities are planned with upcoming start dates. And for field trips, the Eastern Region Music Group has some field trips in March on the 4th and 5th. And on June 7th, the fifth, sixth, and seventh graders all have fun day while the eighth graders get to go to Holiday Hill, where they can swim in the pool, kayak on the lake, or just hang out with friends. On May 18th, the seventh and eighth graders will go to Quasi and Music Park, where they will spend all day going on the fun ride with friends. And actually, the park shut down for the day just to let us go, which is a very kind gesture. And the general music room actually had a huge makeover. And before it consisted of like all their folding cubicles everywhere, which were broken. And they were all replaced with molded cables. And on the wall are hanging ukuleles and guitars. And personally, I think the room is much more spacious and looks much better. And my final thing I'll be going over is the plexiglass. After many complaints from the students, the plexiglass was removed from the tables in the lunchroom. Now, I don't eat in the lunchroom, but all my friends said it was much better and it looks a lot better. And that's all it has.
Thank you. So masks may optional on Monday. And all the students are doing pretty well so far. Life is really not that judgmental. Masks are not. And so, our school plan Matilda was a huge success. We have three sold out performances in February. And actually, our last in-school event was in February 2020 before everything shut down. So it'll take a day to hold the event at Elm. Grade A classmates plan to be at high school similar to last year. A huge thank you to the high school and the student group for supporting us since we moved to our freshman year. Student head conferences are scheduled for the 30th, March 30th and 31st. And our S-Back testing begins on May 9th. In February, we recognize Black History Month and Chinese New Year in our classes and does activities surrounding those. And finally, our wellness center, the gym, has been used as a quarantine room for the past two years. And so we're finally able to reopen it and set up a wellness center again.
Great.
I have one question. What are your full names? Do you mind? I'm sorry. I didn't get there. Did I miss something? Full names?
Oh.
Nick.
Oh, my gosh. My, my fault. Apologize.
No, you're apologizing.
And they're both in eighth grade.
That I knew. Thank you. I apologize if I embarrassed you.
Any questions?
I'm curious what you guys are talking about as far as Ukraine, what's going on with that.
About what?
Ukraine.
Oh, so we're not really talking about it too much, but in my social studies class, a student volunteered to do a current event about it. So we went over it today, but we're not really like going in-depth.
Our social studies teacher talks about it every once in a while, but not in-depth.
So the students aren't talking about it?
Not really.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that.
More questions?
Good job.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you for joining us.
You don't have to say it.
Oh, yes.
Thanks so much.
I guess it does have to be.
Bye, Mike.
Okay, time to Sachi and Monat to give the high school update.
So online SATs is March 24th, which students often use on the computers this year. Councilors are starting to meet with juniors during the upcoming months to review their second year plans. Financial planning night is Thursday, March 10th, run by the school counseling. And then on Wednesday, February 23rd, seniors receive their directions on how to apply for the scholarships up front. So that was another big thing. But going back to your question about Ukraine, I think that at the high school at least, so depending on classes, there's certain platforms be talking about it. I mean, especially like issues of the day. Obviously, you're going to be talking about that a lot, but I know a lot of clubs, especially like I just had two meetings for Spanish on society and national on society today. And both of them are considering like donating funds and that is a topic of conversation also. Yeah. Because it's a little more in depth just based off of maturity levels for the high school also. But it definitely depends on the type of class that you're in because you're not going to really talk about it in your staff's class or whatever. But there is some conversation definitely. And we're looking for is helping also. So.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. So the junior college planning night happened on the 24th of February. There was a school-wide assembly about the dangers of vaping last Wednesday. The students said blood drives occur in March 9th. Spring sports are going to start soon. And the boys' basketball team won ECC against Waterford. And I believe they have their first round of the state game.
That was a break in.
I had a couple of questions. I'll live up. So you mentioned SATs on the computer this year. So is it, are they onsite? Or how's that, how, how do SATs and ACTs work this year?
So, well, the school administrator on the 24th is onsite and ever has their own computers in the school. I believe it's still like three hours, as they take a little personal. They're also in school with those on paper.
They're what?
They're on paper. The only one that's on the computer is the school administrator.
So you can take it at home?
No.
No.
On site. She's like, is that a trick? No. Okay. When I was that age.
I'm still on paper, but the one that.
Oh, not it.
There's a set date for.
Oh, I got you.
Take it in high school.
Got it. Yeah. So the, the March one that's given or whatever that is at the high school, that's on the computer. But the other normal dates are paper. Okay. And that's because there's other schools that don't necessarily have one-to-one computing necessarily. All right.
Test run for like next.
Okay. And do you know if colleges, because colleges started to move away from tests, at least during COVID, do you know if they're moving back towards tests?
I know for me, everything was almost optional, like almost everything else. Well, I'm not sure for the former year, if they're moving towards back to regular. But there's definitely higher academic schools still highly weight them anyway.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Other questions?
I'm wondering about referrals and how are kids behaving? I've heard from other areas of the state where behavior has gotten to be escalated. Are you seeing?
Regarding to just in general, I mean, my experience, I haven't seen anything out of the ordinary in general. But if you're referring to like mask wearing, I don't think there's ever been a real issue of whether or not like, I know there's maturity level of her. Oh, you're not wearing a mask, but you are wearing a mask. But I haven't seen to experience any of that. So.
The not same answer?
Same answer.
What about diversity, equity, inclusion? How it stands first? What's going on?
I mean, the presentation that was given a lot back was definitely beneficial and respected more than I think anyone thought it was going to. Maybe students took it more to heart. But from then on, I think that everything's been done very similarly.
I'm not seeing that. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Questions?
No.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. On the debate. Lunchtime or something? Is it?
It was a full assembly on half of, I think it was nine, 12 were watching it through Zoom. And then the other grades were in audio. So the best speakers. During our advisors, we watched about, it was an extended advisor about.
And was it impactful?
It was informative. I think it definitely was. I think a lot of people. There's a lot of statistics.
Yeah.
That were given that I think a lot of people were fascinated by this big topic in my statistics conference.
But that's good. That is good. You talked.
Yeah, I think it was walking. Yeah, I think students are used to the conversation itself, but I won't think of anything bad. I don't know.
I have one other question. Lunch waves that switched this year? How's that going?
The three lunchways system? I mean, that was the same as last year. They've been going well. I mean, that was a big topic of conversation last year with increasing club times, whatnot. I mean, so for example, today I had my Spanish on society meeting during lunch. And since a lot of students are in that also, my national on society meeting had to be right after school. For example, during basketball season, I just had to tell my cousins I'm coming in late because I had meetings after school. It's a toss-up, I guess. But otherwise, the levels of students in lunch have been running smoothly. Everyone's been able to get through it out and everyone seems to be happy. But I think we're finally starting to adjust with accepting the fact that it's not ever going to go back to being how we had that huge block of time to visit teachers and stuff like that. So I think students are adjusting back towards accepting that time might have to be planned for practice.
The not?
Same thing. Change the world.
Okay. Good. Thank you. The clubs are able to meet and that's all rolling out?
Yeah. It's just an individual sort of group thing, like you guys together. I do think there's, it's different if you meet in clubs during lunch times because the whole club can't meet in total. That can be a little detrimental, but I mean, we're working through it. So at least you get to see some faces and officers try to pop in every now and then. But if you're in a lunchway, then the officer, the president of the club isn't in that lunchway, then you go to the meeting. Then the advisor usually takes over, which is a little unfortunate, but we're doing what we're doing.
And the advisor is the teacher.
Exactly. That is responsible.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is a. Is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as opposed to.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose? Abstain? This is unanimously for those who are home. There is a donation in the amount of $641.20 to Manic Center. And it's from an anonymous donor.
Is it AMRA for a certain program?
It's going to be put in the before and after care account. Okay. So now we move on to the discussion and action items. The first topic is the food service update and recommended purchases. And updating or?
It is a quick point of information. Just looking down at all agenda. I was curious that the items that we keep coming up for number 12, your agenda never seemed to appear on the agenda.
Barry, let's maybe let's board comment when we're in the discussion action item. So let's go through that.
I am concerned about how the whole agenda is the. I have a motion to make up. So I don't know when you want to take it, but. The board. We keep having the same, you know, agenda items, I think we could improve our agenda going forward.
Appreciate it. You know, I'm happy to talk to you offline and also happy to board comment. But now we, you know, we need to progress with the discussion action item. That's on the agenda.
I don't have.
Not on the top. I don't think on the topic that's not on the agenda and not in the discussion action item section. All right. I mean, I don't know. I guess you, you would, you would, you could make a motion to amend the agenda to add a topic. Jamie, please correct me if I'm wrong. You need two thirds. So you need seven, 10 of us. You need seven people to agree to amend the agenda. So if you wanted to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add it to the discussion items, we can.
I just want the agenda item that we figure out a way to improve the agendas going forward now at this point and make that motion.
You can.
The agenda item for next, 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 next meeting.
So you can.
Yeah. Just bring it up during the public, during board comment. And then we can bring it forward and have discussions about a future meeting. I think that's probably what I guess.
Yeah.
Concerns that, and we keep talking about items. Number 14 and other items are about them. They never go on the agenda. So we always have, and this is a third blocking agenda. And a lot of arguments that were small. I think that's an important item that as a board we can discuss.
Okay. So please comment during board comment and then we can then address after. But now we need, either need to make a motion to amend the agenda or we need to progress with the agenda. So it's, it's up to you on what you want with this.
I have a point of information or a question, I guess, also because Jamie, you brought this up previously as for, I don't know if you were the board secretary at the time or Candace was, but you mentioned that there are a number of items that we brought up under board comment. And then those.
I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to cut this, I'm going to cut, I'm going to cut this agenda, this, this topic off. Either make a motion to amend the agenda or we just need to progress with the agenda. So it's, either is fine. I'm fine with someone making a motion to amend the agenda and add a topic. Or we need to move on. So. Do we, does someone want to make a motion to amend the agenda?
This is the topic I want to be agenda next time. Where would I do that?
You can mention in board comments if you would like, then the item for next topic. So we're moving on discussion action item for food service update and recommended purchases. I don't, I don't know if Jeff, if you.
Yeah.
I'm going to go right to Chris or you?
I'm going to kick it off and then I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Urban. We have a good problem on our hands. We needed to talk about and a little bit at length this evening. So you all took a look at the food service income statement, hopefully that was attached. And I'll kind of reference that document first. We have summarized that. We have a beginning, we had a beginning cash balance as of this past July 1st of $303,426. We have a projected net income by the end of this year. We're projecting that we're going to have an additional 549,000, almost $550,000. A total of 853,338. Like Chris can use some more of the semantics around that. But the amount of cash that we can have on hand through the food service program is only 408,769. So we have a surplus or excess cash on hand of 444,000. Almost 40, 45,000 roughly. We, we don't want to turn that money back to the federal government. So hence, we're starting to come to you with some ideas, thoughts, things that we, we need to want to afford with purchasing to support schools and the service program. And make sure again, you know, we're not turning money away that we could be utilizing across our schools. So. With that, Chris, why don't I turn it over to you? You can kind of, if you want to add to that, and then we can talk about some of these agenda items and some of the things you're thinking and what you're working on.
Yeah. So we met with the FFO committee last week.
That's just speaking here. Yeah. Hear your voice in that mic. Thanks.
We met with the FFO committee last week, just to bring them up to speed where we were. Mariana and Jeff and I have been working on the numbers since we've gotten halfway through the school year. And like you said, it's a good problem to have. Most schools aren't having this kind of problem right now. But the kids have really taken to everybody having free lunch.
They are or are not having this problem.
What's that?
They are or are not having this problem.
Some other school districts are having, are having problems where they aren't making money.
Oh, the kids are enjoying the.
Yeah, the kids are enjoying meals. So we're, we're averaging over 30,000 meals a month. So, and they've given us a little extra revenue for those meals because of supply chain issues. You know, everybody's been to the grocery store lately. Food costs are, you know, through the roof. And, but we've been utilizing USDA products and purchasing and just really, we had a great product. So we're selling a lot of meals. So we're trying to look at avenues where we could spend it to put it back into the program. And there's also very strict guidelines on what the USDA lets us spend money on. Fortunately, I can't, you know, put a new basketball dome on or anything like that. But.
Guidelines are very tight.
Yeah, it's very tight. What we can and can't.
We did talk about it.
Yeah. And we've tried some creative ways of going around, but. So we did pick some items. We've already actually done a lot of updating in the, we added an extra double deck convection oven for the high school, just to keep up with the volume of food they're doing every day. We updated some of the other equipment in the, but it was all lower tier. We're actually didn't even go to the board about it. We replaced all the cafeteria tables at Lily B. Haynes. So they're going to have all branded tables there. And tonight, we actually, we are adding on Flanders to replace all their tables. Because if anybody's been over to Flanders, Flanders, those tables, I think are from the eighties that they have over there. So this'll get them into a new atmosphere. The other item we're looking to purchase is a truck for the food service program. We do a lot with like local farms. We have to go pick up the produce. And we also have to, with purchasing, a lot of the distributors are only delivering to one site now. So they won't bring, they won't go to every school. They'll just drop pallets at the middle school and then we have to bring it around to all the different schools to separate the product. We were using the maintenance department, but a lot of times, especially winter time, maintenance is out shoveling, insulting and doing that kind of stuff. So it'd be better if we had our own vehicle where we could just transport the stuff and not have to pull from another agency of the, of the school. And then also some more equipment for the high school. Because like right now, when Carla goes to make pasta, she has to use five different pots to make pasta because she's making 100 pounds at a time. We just want to get one kettle where we could just cook it all in one shot. And I think that's all we had on tonight's agenda items.
Chris, just mentioned the beautification piece.
Yeah. At the end of the month, I'm having a, I guess you would call it a beautification company. They're going to come in and go to the high school line and bring it back up to recent where they can add some new lighting and signage. And maybe have some digital signage put in and make it brighter lighting and in a cafe color.
Cafe type. That's what we talked about.
Yeah. Are you taking off-street customers? I'm serious. Can I stop by for that? No, I'm excited about this. This is great.
Yeah, you could, you could almost stop it for lunch.
We talked about some high top, we have the catwalks up here too.
Yeah.
Before COVID, we were doing cafe lunches up there.
It's like that.
Yeah. So we could, we could add those in also for breakfast too. They call them like breakfast break tables where they, it's a flat top with a backpack hook in the bottom. So the kids can grab their breakfast, hang their backpack up, eat their breakfast and then go over to where they're going. And at lunch, they can utilize them too.
So when is the beautification? When will everything be in place? I'm really serious. I'd like to come and see it.
Well, they, they're going to come at the end of the month and kind of give us some pricing and quotes and then we'll go from there.
We'll make reservations.
Yeah.
We have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And then obviously, we'd have to.
We want permission to go.
We'd have to bring that to you guys to see.
Yeah.
You know, what, what it looks like and what you want to do. Unfortunately, they don't let us do anything in the cafeteria itself. Because it's considered a physical plant, like the painting of the walls and, and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And the tables, middle school and high school, they won't approve tables because they know it's shared space because you use it for study halls and performances and stuff. So they're maybe wanting to pay a percentage, but they won't let you pay for the whole. Or the elementary, they know the cafeteria tables are for the cafeteria. So that's why I said it's very tricky on what they will and will not let you spend stuff on. So. It has to be more direct cafeteria.
Cool. So. I was just curious. I think it's great that all of this is happening and that we're able to improve what's already a good program and getting better. I'm just curious, how did we get here? What, when you say we sold more meals, is it, is there, are we receiving a certain amount per meal that we sold? And we're managing to do it for less than what we're getting reimbursed for? Or I just kind of understand the numbers. How did we get to where we?
Well, first of all, our labor size is the same size it was before COVID. And even smaller. So the high school staff say, we have seven staff members here. They used to put out 400 lunches. Now they're putting out 800. So your labor cost is almost the same.
Okay.
Of what it was pre, same with the middle school. And then the elementaries, which used to be more of a break even type level.
Yeah.
Their levels are so high during the. Their levels are so high during the, you know, during this period now that. They're actually contributing to the profit.
So your staff did a tremendous job creating tons of meals and we got reimbursed, you know, and there was a.
Yeah.
A net gain because of that.
Because of that, and and also the, you know, we we put out a quality product, so.
Right.
You have a lot of students that are, you know, parents that are taking.
I think I know the answer to this, but there's no way to reward this, the the group that pulled this off in any means.
Unfortunately, they don't let you do.
We can't hire extra staff without money.
Trying to hire extra staff, we actually added somebody new to our family today, uh, so.
Good.
Uh, but it's, it's getting people to come in and interview.
Yeah, I just, I think it's great that we're, you know, getting all this stuff, but clearly, you know, people are doing a great job.
Stuff for them.
Got to find something for them.
But but we did do some increases in in pay this year before, so they 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 did get a little bit better scale. Um, just because. You know, they they were working in March when everybody was home and.
Right.
Go, you know, dragging the food out in the snow, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Are you gonna do bag lunches this this summer? I I.
Um, there.
Is that, I know you may not have the funding for it, but.
Yeah, right now they're talking about going back to the demographic style where if you're a CEP school, so like a New London, uh, Hartford. Uh, New Haven, they're gonna go back to, you know, where the kids can pick up and anybody can pick up. At the locations, but it looks like right now they're not gonna let every school district do it.
But I think parents, it was an opportunity for a lot of parents to have their, so I'm thinking. Parents are gonna come whether they qualify financially or not.
No, 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 it's for everybody.
Oh, okay, so I can come.
Any anybody that has a child eighteen or under can go and pick up meals, um, but it won't be at every school district.
Okay.
So you'll have to go at a site, so like, New London has multiple sites, New Haven has multiple sites, so anybody in the state is eighteen and under can go there for lunch.
But we won't have them here.
We won't be at East Lime though.
Okay, so I need to get a child.
Yeah. Yeah, and we were actually thinking about actually, even if they offered it, we were gonna maybe opt out just because the staff is so burned out.
That was a lot of work.
Yeah.
That was a lot of work.
Last two and a half years that they need a break, they really, you know, the. They need the summer off and we're really not sure what's gonna happen next year, so. They could come back and say it's gonna be free, or they could say, oh, we're gonna go back to old style and.
With a raised rate.
Yeah, yeah, they had an extreme raised rate.
Right.
Um, cause like right now, we're getting four fifty-six of of reimbursable meal for lunch. Pre-pandemic, it was three fifty.
Right.
So.
What's your actual cost, Chris? Do you know?
It it depends on the meal and um, depends on the products, um, I'm very aggressive with the USDA product, so I get a lot of products and when they come up available. For free, I get truckloads, um.
But that cash allowed is what's important to maximize, make sure that number is right.
Yeah, we want to keep that, so our maximize cash allowed number as high as we can, just in case.
Okay.
Two weeks before school start, they say, all right, you gotta go back to how you used to do it, because then essentially we'll be restarting from square one where we. You know, where I started five years ago, it's gonna be.
And you'll let us know.
Building a program.
Yeah, they run into that, I wanna know, I, well.
Yeah, and I have weekly meetings with the state, yeah, they started, uh, they call it table talk and every week I'm there.
Thank you.
It was the same question, what are we doing for next year, you know, and they're just. Kind of sick of me, but they're, you know, it's, but you gotta stay on them because.
You're doing your job.
Yeah, and there is some states, Massachusetts has already talked about them funding it. Um, so they would have the USDA pay for the free reuse kits and then they would pay for the full price kits. So it's, it's in Connecticut, it's not sure if that's a model, they want to follow or or maybe give a percentage, so keep. The parents' cost down, so they wouldn't have a, you know, in some cases, their school districts would be a two dollar jump from what they were paying on a daily basis. So I I think there's a lot of different formulas going on right now, it's just. They're probably gonna wait until the last moment, like they typically do.
Yes, other questions?
Uh, just a comment, I just always say the best things for what you're doing, so thank you for that, and I think that the. Beautification project will increase morale, and I think that'll be a really nice boost for everybody in the schools, that's great. So continuing, be great work, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we have a spend down, if you approve these three items tonight, we still have to spend down three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Between now and the end of the school year, so we will be coming back to you with more, we're gonna have.
Any ideas?
Oh, the. Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure that's gonna be quite a big ticket item, but uh, we're also gonna be updating our computer system. For the actual managers at each school, uh, and some, you know, some other. Some other equipment items for the schools and get them all back to where they need to be, there's some big refrigeration. That needs to be done, because the high school refrigerator and freezer walk-ins are originals to the building. So those units will need, gonna need to be replaced, um, and I actually want to add a new walk-in freezer. Take one of our storage closets and turn it into a giant.
To hold the extra.
So we can, so when we have the opportunity of getting extra product, we can get it and have a place to store it without overloading the smaller schools.
Is the possibility of using that for culinary classes? Do projects like for teachers lunch, you know, they make teacher lunches and they do after school.
No, they, unfortunately, they don't let you do.
We try, yeah, we're trying every.
Yeah.
That would make sense.
No, it's, but you're right, that's what we were thinking, yeah, it's food related, but it's not a USDA program, so they don't.
Yeah.
We had even talked about if if we could separate the money and kind of earmark it for that end of the year where. There are budgets or there are accounts that are left unpaid, you know, that type of thing to kind of help with any type of. Of help in that fashion, and we can't do that either, I mean, the definitely the guidelines are are very, very structured with it. Um, but I think that you've done a great job at allocating and kind of seeing where you can spread that money. Into investing and not just one school, but all the schools.
Yeah, we definitely want to make them all.
Yeah. Couldn't you put in the line item on the budget, because you don't know how it's gonna be the end of the year, am I, is that?
No, it's it's a, it's a revenue account, so it's totally set.
Yes.
Got it, got it, okay, just, I'm like, I would like to just ask one thing, um, if you don't mind. Was we, you've done such a great job of allocating in all the different schools, but I'm just curious, have you looked at um. Salem as an option to help upgrade anything there as well?
Yeah, we're not allowed to do.
Can't do it. See, I thought why was possibly thinking out of the box, because we do have that partnership with them.
Yeah.
Um, with.
But we don't mix funds, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah, yeah, Salem has their own.
It is a good.
Yeah, their own account and, yeah. They definitely don't let you mix, they don't let you mix, you know, unless you wanted to take them over, but then they become your. District. Yeah. Yeah, we definitely don't want to. Consulting's fine.
Got it.
Yeah, cause then you get involved in it. You get involved in.
Don't sweat, it was just a question.
Get involved in doing your free reviews application.
Right, I do like the appliances too that you were talking about though, because that was actually kind of going on what you were talking about, culinary experience. We do have leaders and things like that in the school, so if that is something that's great, I'll tell them that's a good thing.
Yeah, and we also took back the uh maintenance budget uh this year, turn the next year.
Yeah, there's a couple items that were, could be food service or were food service related, pull them out of the budget to.
So one quick comment, so in the motion, we have very specific numbers for the tables and the kettle. And then the food service vehicle, we have a little cushion, um. How confident, like, cause if we make a motion and we approve this and then the numbers change a little bit, we may have to come back, so do, should we? Do you need a little more cushion in these, could change, or do you think?
Well, the the truck was the direct quote from the state, and that was from the state.
Mariana left a little bit of cushion in that one, just like.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and then, and then that was a direct quote for the kettle too, so that would be.
That included everything.
That was everything, that was everything, delivery.
And the tables as well, so we we feel good that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, those should be right out.
Good question, does anyone want to make?
I make a motion, so. I didn't know Lee had.
Trying to find my unmute, no, I'm all set, thank you.
Lee, if you do have a question, if you can use the raise hand uh feature, that will help them, we'll see it a lot easier, great.
You got it, thanks.
Like she was ready to talk, that's why I.
And I think Kate, were you gonna make?
So, motion to approve the purchase of a recommended food service vehicle not to exceed three seven thousand, that's a pedal. Uh, twelve, thirteen, nine, nineteen, and cafeteria tables for Flanders at seventeen, four, sixty-nine. Total cost not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I need a second.
My second.
Any uh, all those approved? I, why, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstained? Passes unanimously, thanks Chris for all you're doing.
We'll be back.
Enjoy the money while you have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
The next topic is to talk about Lily B. Haynes Media Center and the seal and reseal of the carpet.
Yeah, I'll give a quick synopsis and then Chris uh take it over, you probably all remember we were having, we had the mold issue in uh Lily B. Haynes. Uh, the library, which we addressed and mitigated, uh, as well as just tiles are still popping out. And those are, those two areas are, you know, in in some of the hallways near that, uh, the library media center. Those two areas are the ones that the floor was not sealed prior to tile and carpeting going down, so hence we had some discussions and. I'll turn it over to Chris, is that the town building committee meeting or the town building committee is involved as well, but.
So Jeff summarized everything pretty well.
That's it, that's the problem we're having and we need to fix.
Committees last meeting, I've got one quote or a couple of years for a lot of our carpeting, because that statewide contract, they gave us a price. For the work we done within the media center, which would include removing the carpet, sealing the floor, to put it out, the carpet spurs. Associated testing, incident work, uh, that came in with the testing at just over forty-three thousand when I went to. The building committee, uh, Rocky asked me to come back a couple additional bits, so I'm working those up right now. Waiting for those to come in, so what we have for you is a request to basically endorse the project going to the building committee for funding. And not to exceed forty-five thousand, so.
Get this problem fixed once. Seal, no, it happened this summer, right, just, we pull up the carpets, seal and then re-carpet, yeah. Yeah.
So you put, you just put it out to bid?
I have quotes coming in.
Quotes, when is that then? When did you have a big cutoff date?
I didn't do it as uh an IFB, I just sent it out to a couple of different vendors to get prices.
Do you think you'll get more than one that will come in around this forty-five or?
Really, no, to be quite honest, um, we might have something lower. Because sometimes statewide contracts run a little high depending on how much competition there is. Uh, given the current competition for other trades, uh, it's more likely that they will be hired than this, I suspect, so.
We have the one for forty-three.
Yeah, we have the one.
I just didn't know, or if we had any kind of. Idea what the other ones would come back with.
Other questions?
Well, isn't this part of the renovation, isn't there something that?
Correct, they would come out of the town, the the money that we had um set aside for the school projects, yep, there's the remaining dollars down there.
Okay, because it seems like it was never fixed, it was never properly repaired.
Yeah, we we did half the school kind of, and the other half we didn't seal, um, but we sealed the half that we did, we've got no issues that I'm aware of.
No, not in the places that were sealed.
Yeah.
Areas that hadn't been sealed. The library for one, the media center, uh, certain parts all the way where they've been popping up and we've been taking care of it ourselves. In small sections, just problematic areas, that'll probably be something we chase for quite a while.
There may be people wondering why you didn't seal it and some were sealed.
It was money.
Is it just me?
So.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering why certain things were sealed underneath and things weren't.
The issue didn't manifest everywhere, and where the tiles were already going down in one area.
Yeah.
And it manifested there, so they fixed that area. They took washing readings throughout the rest of the school.
Remember that, yeah.
It wasn't problematic in the other areas at that time, so it was decided that for. Money purposes.
Yeah.
That we would not do those other areas, so.
In the background.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Yep.
That was the point.
How much is left on that that bond that we took out?
One seventy-four. I get somewhere.
Somewhere between one sixteen, one eighty.
Have any other punch list items besides this? Are we, do we think we're done? Is the Flanders roof fixed?
Flanders roof fixed, um, this is the only item that uh that comes to mind as.
No other punch list items?
Everything else was done?
Yeah, I feel lucky that we have.
We had outstanding and I can't remember.
Nothing else outstanding, uh, some concerns that maybe we'll reprogram and feature to better improve. Building climate and comfort.
Can we fix that in here? It is so golden here.
So, uh, yeah, I think again, when the buildings were done, there was. The systems would operate, and there would be operation more seasoned than. In some place that works okay, in other places, it's been a bit more problematic, so. Maybe in the future we'll do some more reprogramming, but certainly that's not gonna raise, rise the level of.
The floor.
Questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Do I?
Thanks, Chris. I would like to make a motion to approve, I don't know if this is the right motion. Does it have to mention that we're giving the building committee the go-ahead to spend the funds or?
Well, they they still have to, they have both themselves approved, we just have to do it first.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed Lily B. Haynes Media Center seal and re-carpet. And the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna stay.
Motion passes, thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
He's he's not, he's not leaving us just yet.
I don't know when the next building committee, town building committee.
Thursday.
Okay, that's right. That's right, so two weeks yet, or two weeks now, okay.
So, uh, the next discussion action topic is the high school baseball field update.
So, you want to go ahead?
Let you jump right in.
No, not much to update on, except we've been waiting for spring to come around and hope, we made hope for a. Drier than normal winter and of course, I hope so, I'm proud of it. I'm not even gonna mention what we're hoping for now, because it's already looking like it's gonna be a wet spring. Right now, so uh, the current plan though is as soon as it gets dry enough, uh, we'll be to get back out on field. Feel itself, uh, we have to talk a little bit this evening about the connection to irrigation, this is why we're here. Uh, that work approved, uh, that work will be done during spring break, uh, we can shut down a part of that to do, cut across. And then uh. Soon after that, we would have grasses on the field and and maybe we have the opportunity to get one game in there this year, just as a. Reopening, but uh, that's where we are right now, uh, before you, uh, two different issues, one is. You know, additional funding beyond what was previously approved, the second is the approval as well of the irrigation piece. Irrigation piece, uh, we see a proposal from the current contractor on field. Of approximately twenty thousand change to do the. Change to do the tap in the connection to the main water line on. Off Churchill Road of the parking lot. That's basically where we stand at the moment.
And we had tapped it at one seventy-five, hundred and seventy-five thousand previously, so yeah, would be some additional connection fees or. Higher than we anticipated.
We had two change, two change orders along the way already because we had to bring in. Extra subject sand for one earth field that was draining and also additional amendments to the soil that was not, that wasn't anticipated just to take the. So.
And we've reached out to the first electman to see if we could have the town of Eastline tap fee of thirty-five hundred dollars waived. So we have to build up to, yeah, to waive that for us. So we're still waiting to that. That's what it looks like. We're gonna check there. So saving thirty-five hundred dollars, but still higher obviously than originally the plan, but. We get this field done and not look back.
James?
I'm assuming the baseball team knows this. That they might not have deals and have we reached out to Park and Rec about the field usage?
Park and Rec, no, because they don't, they won't use them in the spring, but.
Bridebrook last year.
Oh, yeah, to use Bride, yes. They put them probably in conversation last year. We, we talked about this last.
Yeah, this is.
When we started this, so the baseball team knows that we were hoping for one.
The schedule really wasn't.
No, I know, but I know that they were hoping.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll reach out to Dave.
I, I talked to Jack Biggs a while back. You, you know, I've definitely had the discussion that goals, get a game on there, but not to, not a lot of intensity.
Last year we utilized. Press, we used Bridebrook for the whole season last year, so we would definitely need to make sure that's open again.
Yep, I'll reach out to Dave.
Other questions? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the increase from a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to, to not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand for the reconstruction of the baseball field as presented.
About your second?
My second.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say hi?
Hi.
Opposed?
Oh, I opposed to.
And abstained? Motion passes eight to. Okay. The trifecta. So the next topic is a discussion topic. We have talked about the draft of having a subcommittee. On I guess facilities asset management committee, but creating a new subcommittee and before doing so, we wanted to have a charter so we could define what it is. We have attached the draft charter and this is really for people hopefully to review and provide their thoughts and comments. At this point and also give everyone a chance after this to think about it before moving to action at the next meeting. If, if we want to move forward, we'd go to the next meeting and. Let's approve the charter for the committee. So does anybody, did you want to, Chris, give any overview of it or?
It takes pretty self-explanatory based on some of the previous discussions. The only additional commentary I would make is I think the importance of the committee is. Continuing to increase in recent times. I would lay out there as an example, one of the roots of few projects. Which replaced rooftop and it's on the high school. Now, when, of course, it's a budget two years ago. Unit itself was priced out at about a hundred and twenty-five K. So we have about two hundred, two fifty set aside to do the work and just found out last week that in two years since getting COVID, the high demand range back equipment and whatnot, that. Unit itself has exceeded the available, just the unit itself has exceeded the available budget that was given. So I think. This committee itself. Would like to have, you know, some lengthy discussions about reprioritization or in this case, well, we just put it on the shelf and wait and see what happens. First come, last gone. So those types of discussions I think are gonna be even more important given the current state of construction costs.
We get it, want to try and make some decisions around the pool roof as well and moving forward with, you know, what we're gonna do there, whether it's, because if we're gonna. Move in a direction of a new roof, it's gonna take us a whole nother year to make that happen. But if we go in the direction of fixing the roof as previously discussed, we could get that done this summer if we act fairly quickly, you know, on that. So that would be one of the first charges of, of this committee. With, in tying it with, with FFO as well.
Committee, I think it's necessary, just instruction and it really strikes me. The language that it is a very action-oriented. The third paragraph that says that the committee will be charged with considering and developing schedules for the pursuit of major improvement. Very action-oriented. Last paragraph, that the committee will evaluate programs and suggest additions, deletions, adjustments to the program. May card and expected G, very much as action-oriented, maybe that's going to do some processing of the information. In within the committee and then bring recommendations to work. That basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions or comments? I have one minor one is, is I would like to see somewhere, I think this. Committee working closely or partnering or something with FFO will be really important. Obviously, one hand feeds the other. They go hand in hand, so maybe just something of in conjunction with, in partnership with or, or something.
I just have a quick question. I don't know what happens when you have, oh gosh, what's it called? The town building?
Building committee.
Yeah, if someone always go, I'm assuming someone always from the board go, the board bed goes when something has to do discussion about schools. So my question is, should someone from this committee attend, attend those when the, I gosh, I'm sorry. The town building committee meetings when something in the school is being discussed or is that, is, am I repeating my, am I repeating what the original board member should do?
Well, we already do attend the board.
Who, oh, so you do every year? I mean, every meeting?
Yeah.
And you do too?
I haven't to the last few Chris's taken over.
Because it's been focused on open projects instead of.
Yeah.
Our open projects.
Okay.
Still from their perspective because I've been closed out. Of course, the town has its own work right now. Now, I haven't been here when there hasn't been no.
While we do, either do we. Well, I didn't know you went. Thank you for letting, letting us know that because I'm assuming I knew you were going Jeff. When we were knee deep in the. So. Okay, thank you.
So my question and it's me being me, usually an ad hoc committee is a short-term committee. Do you plan on this being short-term or would you like it to be a more permanent fixture committee?
I think it's more of a standing subcommittee.
If it's, if it's a more permanent committee, I'd like to take out the ad hoc part of it and make it a committee that's going to be permanent. And I think that makes more sense than doing a temporary committee.
To the point, Jim.
I think it should be standing.
I, I, I agree. I think it should definitely be a committee that we have permanently because our buildings and grounds are always needing. Attention in some sort of fashion.
But just to spinball, I think it's more of a quarterly meeting to.
And, and that, I have no problems with that. I'm just saying if it's going to be, usually an ad hoc committee has like an end date, like a two-year committee. I, I don't think that this should be an ad hoc committee. I think it should be a permanent standing committee.
I agree with you, Jamie.
So will you be looking for membership from other boards like the Board of Finance representative or you want to keep it just kind of?
It would require outside membership because I think this. The purpose of this subcommittee was really to help. Figure out what we would want to do before we make any decisions. So we, you know, like Eric said, stuff, and he talks to the FFO, the FFO kicks it around, then brings it to the board. And the board decides if there's action or just endorsement or whether or not what's done in the subcommittee just helps me with the CIP, which I look forward to.
Right.
I don't think there's anything for external.
We'll muddy it up. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, so thanks, Chris. So everybody noodle it, think about it, and then we'll bring this back the next meeting for discussion and action. Okay, moving on to the next discussion action item on instruction and Jeff on a COVID nineteen update.
Yeah, I thought maybe I'd have a little bit more to, you know, report out on COVID nineteen and how it was going. We were having any, you know, any issues, but honestly, knock on wood. Things have been very smooth since February twenty-eight. People have been respectful from, you know, some of our students. I think, you know, the, the mask piece, some people, when they're feeling they want to wear them, they're wearing them and when they're not, they're not. And it's grown to, I'd probably say about an eighty, twenty of folks, you know, again, as COVID cases continue to decline, that more folks aren't, aren't wearing them and. We've updated our information on the website as it pertains to the plan that we had to create every year with the state. So we've taken care of those, addressed, you know, mask wearing requirements and so forth, changed all the signs obviously on the front doors. Kind of thought I might have more to, you know, to talk about and share on this, but so far, so good. We're doing well. And it was really nice last Tuesday night being in, we're meeting sun and it was the most normal thing I think I've experienced in probably the last two, two, two and a half years. So it was great. And we want to, so maybe. Yeah. But I don't know if any of you are hearing anything or community. I, I've gotten zero emails or any more correspondence, you know, from the community has not come forth.
Can I just add something? I've, I've been in five, no, five, four different elementaries and middle schools over the past five days. And one of the things that we've done is to run a, run a percentage of how many students have masks. And it's usually around thirty-five percent. I just thought it was interesting because each school handles it supposedly different. But thirty-five percent of the, and the staff are not wearing masks either. So it's just an interesting observation being in all of these different schools. So.
Interesting.
Not that it matters what we do here, but it's just to hear what the other schools are doing.
And then some districts just as early as, or as late as today have just lifted, whatever, I think is on the news this morning, but they're made in New York City today. So some of them are just coming off of that and I think stuff you still might even have in place. So we're gonna continue to monitor open communication as well. I hear anything further, if we get any emails, if you get any emails or messages, please let me know. Happy to converse with any, any of the parents or community members.
My information, I have any updates on the work that the DIA has been doing at schools?
Yeah, I didn't bring anything tonight. Those meetings are coming up. So the next meeting, Barry, I'll bring something forward or have committees step up and share some more information. Yeah, yep. I'm keeping that on the radar though to make sure that we bring out pieces of information forward.
Move on to Jamie's topic, discussion action items on policy where there's a lot, just one. When I say each time, but I, I want to say each time is that Elisa, Jill, Jamie, the work that they're doing. There's a lot of prep work going through these policies and reading through each one, and there's a lot of policies, especially as you get to the three thousands and, and all. And they're really, you know, they come so well-prepared and do it's, it's, it's really great and appreciate all the efforts, so. I'll pass on to Jamie to run us through all this, yeah.
Same thing I said last time. I, Jill and Elisa have been coming well-prepared and we've been keeping a very fast pace, getting them all done and it's appreciated.
And we've been excellent facilitation.
Yes, you've done a great job, Jamie. Thank you.
It's been great being able to.
Wonderful.
Through all of these and try to get them as updated as we possibly can. So tonight we have a lot for you. But I'll start with A, I guess. It's a first review of suggested new policies for the two thousand series. Two thousand. So these are three that we don't have. And they're brand new. Hold on destruction of records for litigation purposes. Retention of electronic records and information and uniform treatment of recruiters. These are first readings. So it's first reading. Then thirty days later, it's a second reading and either an approval or not approval. So if anyone has any questions, thoughts, get it to Jeff or bring it to the next meeting and we'll talk about it at that. Or if you have a question tonight. So that's the first one of them. If anybody has a question on the first set. So the next one is a first review of revisions to policies. And the one that we have suggested for revision on this one is policy twenty-two ten, which is administrative leadway in the absence of Board of Education policy. It's for a review and for a date change because I don't remember when that was renewed last. But most of these have been reviewed last in like nineteen ninety. So we're trying to modernize them and bring them to the new age. I don't know, same thing with that first, second and either approval or not. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on it. Share. So then the next one is first review of suggested deletions of two thousand policies. So what we've been doing is we've been going through them and. If they are either repetitive found somewhere else or if they have no legal statute with them. We are trying to, or they are covered by statute, we're trying to combine and make it nice and neat and. Get rid of things that are extraneous in the policy book. So these are policies twenty-one hundred, twenty-one eleven, twenty-one twenty-one, twenty-one thirty, twenty-one forty, twenty-one forty-one, twenty-one forty-five, twenty-two twenty, twenty-two thirty-one, twenty-two fifty and twenty-four hundred. Those are suggested deleted policy in the two thousand. All right, so the next one is first reading of the three thousand series, same concept. Yes, okay. Sorry, I'm looking at my screen. I'm looking at the paper at the same time. Okay, deletion of the three thousand series, we have. Three thousand thirty-one hundred, thirty-two forty, thirty-two fifty, thirty-one seventy, thirty-one eighty, thirty-two ninety, thirty-three thirteen, thirty-three thirteen point one, thirty-three twenty-one, thirty-three twenty-six, thirty-three twenty-six point one. Thirty-two forty, thirty-four thirty-two, thirty-four thirty-four, thirty-four fifty, thirty-five ten, thirty-five thirteen point one, thirty-five fourteen, thirty-five sixteen, thirty-five sixteen point one, thirty-five seventeen, thirty-five twenty-four point two, thirty-five thirty-two, thirty-five thirty-three and thirty-five sixteen. We did miss one here. I think there's not.
Like overwhelming just to even look at the list when. So my question is this, you're, I'm, what I'm gathering is these things are getting absorbed somewhere else, most of this stuff.
Some of them are not getting absorbed elsewhere because they're in state statute. So we're, and if you.
Meaning that doesn't need to be in our.
Some of them are covered in a four thousand series or a five thousand series or we've already done something.
For, for those of us who are.
Policy.
Non-policy people, is it, is it, would it be easy for you to just like put a little like star next to the ones that are state statute and ones where. Just like removing this because, not that we need, I, I don't want to make more work, but like in the future as you do with this stuff.
It is a sentence that says basically we will follow state statute on purchasing and that is the policy.
Okay.
That's what's written there on some of.
Because I'm, you know, when you read the title of the policy, it's like, whoa, we gotta have something for that. Where is, where is it now?
Some of these are quite literally a sentence that says we will pay our bills.
Yeah, from nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they're crazy.
It literally says we will pay our bills.
Bill, it's quite refreshing to go delete.
I'm sure. I just, I'm just curious. Holy crap.
No, but we'll take care. We'll be good. We'll take care.
And there's also a validation exercise too, if, if they're very prescriptive, we want to make sure we're aligned with how we're. And there's also a validation exercise too, if, if they're very prescriptive, we want to make sure we're aligned with how we're practically operating.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm just.
Yeah, no, yeah. Definitely been a lot of reading for us.
You know what, it's been fun in a strange way, yeah.
Like, we have a policy that says we'll pay our bills. I hope we would pay our bills, but.
Some people need to be told, but.
I commend you for your, and this.
And, and the, kind of as you look medium term, maybe not long term, but once we get through all of these, then we should just, it's just a standard, every so often, we're reviewing these.
Once we get them all up to date, it'll be easier to review when statute legislation comes down the pike.
What we've done is added sort of thing, new ones that come forward, I mean, so, yeah, cleaning the whole thing up. Yeah, it's, yeah, something that should have been done years ago, but everything else.
Because those, you look at some of these, the last time they were ever touched was like nineteen ninety.
And we are getting attorney's guidance as we go through all of this, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know.
And, and we are proposing, as you can see, adding some as well, um, and, you know, getting that out over to, so this is sort of the to align with, you know, new statute, and those are in here as well as it adds.
So I did miss one, so suggested revision of policies in three thousand series I missed, um, which was thirty-two-eighty and thirty-five-forty-one-point-one. Give grants and requests and use supportive education vehicles. Sorry, I missed that, so that's, I missed saying it.
Oh, but we did, we were just on deletions, then there's a separate.
It might be shifted with it, somewhere else.
All right, then, so then D F is suggested, uh, this is a second reading of the one thousand series, so these are policies twelve-fifty, sex offenders on school property bill, which we just proposed for deletion in the three thousand series, so we propose it for deletion in three thousand, but we're proving it in the one thousand over here. Okay, so it's twelve-fifty point one, sex offender on school property, twelve-forty, green cleaning programs, thirteen-thirty-three-point-one, security and school safety plan, which includes the regulation. Policy twelve-fifty-five pesticide application on school property, policy ten-sixty volunteers, and policy thirteen-thirty-two, automatic external configurators. I will make a side note that the regulation is not a per approval, because that's the superintendence of how we implement our policy, that's just for us to review. Have any comments, questions, or suggestions to change or modify any of those policies?
These are second.
These are second readings.
I haven't received any. This committee's done an outstanding job.
Believe it or not, it's fun. I think it is.
You said that with the face, but didn't say it.
I think it's interesting, I think it's interesting, okay, all right, I'm, I could be a geek sometimes.
All right, so I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested new policies in one thousand series as presented.
Oh, no, Jill second.
I'll second it.
Yep. Any further discussion on the second review of these policies? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? abstained? Pass unanimously.
So this is the second review of revision of Board of Education policy and regulations, ten-ten, non-discrimination. Twelve-fifty-one, school visitors, thirteen-twenty-four, solicitation of funds, thirteen-thirty-one, smoking, and sixteen-hundred prohibition of firearms. Second review, so this is either a, um, approve or not approve.
Comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested revised policies in the one thousand series as presented.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Okay, unanimously, and the last one.
All right, the last one is second reading of policy deletions. Um, all of these, this is a second reading of all these policies to be deleted from our policy handbook. Policy one thousand, policy eleven-hundred, policy eleven-twelve, policy eleven-twenty, policy eleven-forty, policy twelve-hundred, policy twelve-ten, policy twelve-fifty-one, policy thirteen-twenty-two, policy thirteen-forty, policy thirteen-fifty, policy thirteen-sixty, policy fifteen-hundred, and policy sixteen-sixty.
Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Puts me out just thinking about it.
I want to make a motion to approve the deletion of policy, these suggested policies in one thousand series.
I will second that one.
Other discussions?
I kind of liked the policy fifteen-fifty of senior citizens, and, you know, when I was, um, I mean, to be on Board of Education, it was one of the things I heard pretty consistently, was that, um, people in the community would want to have some more participation or opportunity to have relationships with students and programs and publics, and I know where you and I talked about that. I keep on the board, definitely, so I didn't, I don't love deletion on this one, but perhaps revision of it, in order, unless it's going to be given ourselves.
Because we're still, we're still, those things will resume, and, uh, we have a lot of connections with seniors and head of center especially. Um, I know Jeff, he has kids to walk over to, uh, yeah, yeah, so.
There's also a program for the youth, is it at the youth program, or?
We've got the mentor, the mentor program, where senior citizens come in and mentor, uh, students, that's building back up now, so we're, yeah, so they're, they're happening, so, uh, just I don't want any, I don't want you to think that those things aren't happening, and we need a policy to make sure they do, they are, and they will continue, policy, no policy. That's important.
Isn't this specific to inside the school, is that what it is?
This is specific to inside the school, and what a senior citizen is. So it says, I'm working, as a contribution, that senior citizens. Senior citizens make to the community, the school administration shall develop appropriate activities and programs to promote cooperation between the schools and its senior citizens for the purposes of this policy. A senior citizen shall be defined as sixty years of age or older unless otherwise expressly provided by the board.
You're reading thirteen-fifty?
That's thirteen-fifty says.
I don't know what you're looking at, because I was just looking over at your screen, and you had more stuff than I knew.
We live at what you say, get, so.
I just wanted to know.
Well, I, you know, I think that's really an important conversation, and perhaps when we have a retreat, you know, talk a little bit about the differences between practices and policies, and practices usually influence policies, and the policies, you know, so the relationship is, is really interesting, and I think worthy of discussion, and but it's under the purview of the Assistant Superintendent, according to what I have in front of me, so maybe that's not.
Are you looking at the regulations?
It says community relations, regulations.
You're looking at the regulations.
But I pulled it up under policy.
Right, but.
Policy. Yeah, that's the one that you, uh, that the board's responsible for.
You know, I know we do it for veterans, and I just think we're missing a really important opportunity, and I think it should be kind of a thrust of some of the work that we do, and I think it would go directly in line with, um, you know, what do we, what do we call them, um, not priority learning outcomes, but where the kids are actually, um.
Like the internship thing?
Yeah, yeah, having those kind of relationships, so, I think this is really important, so.
Thoughts or comments?
Great work here, actually doing all this, um, you can get this up there earlier on, your agenda. It could sound like a Friday, so I, you know, have to kind of recap to, you know, relax, we can all, before we.
We can shoot for that, Barry, out of this, th- this is going to be trying over the next couple of months here, because we're, we're getting into the four thousand, five thousand, six thousand series, which are very lengthy. And it's a lot of time on this committee, um, so, but we can try our best to get, uh, get them up.
If you could point on the early agendas that are going to be policy posted, that will be like a, a few that I have to come back and look at, because we weren't updating the legislation for all the stuff. And, uh, then, I just wrote down, because that's.
Yeah, yeah, which is like a separate note.
It says, you know, to be posted, or, you know, come out and read this if you're interested, is they gonna, just, uh, indication that they are definitely telling, and all the problems get, you know, they're trying.
Can I just say, do we used to get the packets on Friday?
They do, yeah.
Because you have the whole week, okay.
We try and get everything on Friday, yeah, I mean.
But you're, okay, all right.
Always our goal is to get things done by Friday.
I know, it's hard, I know.
Sometimes we circle back on a Monday or something gets, you know, missed, or, you know, we're still trying to meet on it. Yep, we'll keep working to, to get it posted as soon, as soon as we possibly can.
It could be in your weekly update also, just to put a sentence to say, and just remember, this is coming.
Sure.
Or the policy committee, whatever.
Yeah. Yep.
Other questions, comments?
Can I just ask this question, please?
Yeah.
Looking at thirteen-fifty, and then what the statute is, to me, it seems like all of that is kept, just deleted it, or whatever, moved out of it, is covered in the is covered in statute, or the, whatever, whatever it is, God, gosh, excuse me.
The regulation.
The regulation, it's covered in the regulation, I'm thinking that is the logic behind what we did, what we did.
Well, we talked about the pillars or the characteristics of a graduate, one of our students who comes out of our schools, what were about the twelve, the profile of the graduate, you look at those. You know, that, that's how we want them to develop, is contributing as citizens, and being able to have relationships, collaborate. So I, I, I think we're missing the boat, which is kind of slash all that.
Okay, it's not going away. No, 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 it's not going, those programs will never, they're not going away. Well, the, the, yeah, the, the policy, and that's kind of what, uh, the attorney had said, you know, you're doing these things, it's, it's not, it's not giving a directive necessarily. Uh, because they're already happening and we're engaging in those activities, but I get you, I, I understand your point.
Well, practice usually precedes policy, so policy is born out of practice, so practice is current, so we want to promote support.
Yeah.
So, when we've been meeting with, um, our attorney Sarah from Shipman and Goodman, where we've been going through these policies, we've been looking at the legality of policy. And if the policy is not something that has legal teeth to it. We have been verging on the side of, let's not have it, because we don't want to have to defend a policy that is actually not legal.
So liability. So there's no, I don't, I, I don't, you'd have to explain that, or Sarah, whatever Dana is, is going to have to explain that, like, legal teeth, we can't have relationships.
No, we can have relationships, she's suggesting we not have a policy that doesn't have a legal statute behind it, because then you can't defend it. So statutes, our policy is governed by statute and law, so and if it's not, doesn't have a statute or some legal ease behind it, the recommendation is to not have it, because then it's just words on paper.
Yeah, and we should be limiting words on paper, is what we should be doing. Sounds basically, uh, to give it, look at it a different way, if you had something that was in, like, we have all these policies, okay, we missed something. Or don't do something that's policy-related, we could get caught up in, in a lawsuit or something along those lines, so, um, there's no reason in Shipman's eyes, uh, to have a policy of this nature that speaks to something that, you know, isn't a statute to have, you know, seniors in the schools. It's problematic, it's not a law, it's, that's the, the legal definition of where they're coming from, that's why it's eliminated.
Not to have a senior citizen in school, that senior citizen can come and sue us, because we have a policy that says we are going to allow all the senior citizens over the age of sixty in schools.
But doesn't say that.
But that's what could happen.
But that's what could happen.
Yeah, that's, so we're trying to avoid having.
You know, as I look at it, there's kind of practice and policy, uh, our practice is that we're going to do this, and there's lots of things that we do from a practice perspective that we want to promote. The question is, do you need a policy to do that? And, you know, from my perspective, I don't think we need a policy to do what we're doing, we're doing we're doing great things, we could do more, we could do less, whatever, I don't think we need a policy to necessarily state, um, that we're going to interact with, uh, the senior citizens of the community.
Just for public clarity, and myself as well. No, uh, communication in or interaction that has already been established, because there are programs established. There's mentoring programs, there are programs collaborating with the senior center, to my knowledge, and if they did not, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, that there are several opportunities, um, where also students are going over to the community center, and also downtown with the schools. Um, so Lily B. Haynes goes over to the community center quite often, from my knowledge, so does the middle school, and then the high school as well. So, um, you know, collaborating and creating those relationships, not just with our elderly population, but within our community itself. Whether or not it's business opportunities, businesses, business owners, families, parents, you name it. So those things are still going, and they will continue.
Yes, they have not, let's go, they will be brought, there's no intention of removing any of them, yeah.
That's good.
Our attorneys, we look at all these, all the nations of policies.
Yeah.
My concern would be if you change or eliminate a policy that isn't really definitive as far as who can come to the schools, or if we can't, can we get sued then if someone shows up?
There is a policy about visitors in school.
Imagine something, seniors or principals coming in, or I don't know, just.
Then there is a policy.
Wondering if we're leaving ourselves open by not having a policy or procedure of.
And, and we do, yes, Jamie said, we, we have policies, the volunteers coming in, um, all of those are in place, and every one of these is, is vetted. We march right down the list with the attorney, and she starts off with recommending repeal it, or you can keep it, um, you don't need it, uh, and we talk about, and we've talked about each one uh, in great detail, and some of them, yeah, she, yep, she, she's part of the process, walking through each one of these, uh, in the series.
Yeah, twelve-fifty is the school visitor policy that we already had for the first reading. There's a motion, and I'd actually like to move the question, please.
I don't think a motion was made.
There was a motion, uh, Jamie and Jill.
Okay, um, all those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 Stay. And, Barry, stay. Okay, motion passes, so that is the end of our discussion, action items. And we're moving on to administration reports and chat.
First and foremost, March is Board of Ed Appreciation Month, so then each year, we've got some cards and maybe we could slide a couple of them down or just a handful and pass them along if you want, so. The kids do a great job and thank you to the principals for leading the charge, teachers and teachers and students and so, thanks. So, just some cards for you to peruse and take a look at.
Thank you.
As thank yous from our, our schools, the kids always like putting this together. So, and thank, thanks to all of you as well, so. We appreciate it and enjoy this month and saying thanks to our Board of Ed. Lily B. Haynes, I wanted to just give a quick update on that, that timeline as we're moving forward and first, now that we're, I know we did it via Zoom, but I just want to publicly thank Melissa again for, you know, all of her efforts, you know, she was both at Nine X Center first and then, you know, at Lily B. Haynes as well, she's done an outstanding job and we're still trying to talk her out of leaving, but it's not worth it. But I just wanted to say thank you again, we're going to miss her a lot. So, I had an opportunity to go meet the staff, put in my weekly update, this past Friday, met the staff. We put out a pamphlet to our parent community of Lily B. Haynes, we're gathering feedback from parents. Process of forming a committee, Jill offered to be a committee member, which is great, put some board representation. We have interviews, will be on March 28th, that Monday, and March 30th. So, end of the month is, is when we're looking at interviews to be taking place, so we had to change, we had it as March 29th, we had to change the date, so.
How was that looking?
The, we have a number of applicants, yeah, yeah, we have a high number of applicants, which is great, it's not, it doesn't close until a week from today, the 14th, so we'll, we'll get more. Usually, as you've seen the past, we'll wait until, you know, the end sort of thing, submit, so we're really looking forward to, you know, a great pool and the process and we hope to bring the found candidates to the Board of Ed on the floor. So, that's our, that's our plan, so we can give whoever that individual might be ample time to have another position to give notice and be ready to start on July 1st. So, we're excited about that. As Dan, it was nice to Dan Cunningham to mention the Board of Select and Presentation went well this past week, last week. Thank you, Eric started, kicked us off and Candace was there, so it was, it seemed to go well and we're getting ready for the 21st with the Board of Finance, so that'll be our next, our next step. I wanted to, I could put in a couple of updates, but I just want to make sure and reference the high school NEAS accreditation visit, 10-year visit is coming. Yes, exactly, the 20th of December, of December, of March, it kicks off on a Sunday, Eric and I have already talked, Eric's going to, he's going to join and some of the board members that want to attend that.
I was going to say, I remember 10 years ago, they interviewed all of us.
That will come after, if they're still doing that same process. And, you know, Deb is up in Salem right now, actually presenting Salem Board, Julie's here, Julie, you got a couple pieces of information as well, we talked to Julie and she's got a couple pieces she can share, a little bit more detail.
Nice to see you all again.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll just do a very quick overview because it is coming up actually the next couple of weeks, so it's going to be from March 20th, which is Sunday, to March 23rd, which is Wednesday of the same week. Our NEAS visiting team chair is Paul Smith, who is superintendent in East Hampton. And for Building Based Steering Committee, we have Maggie Gross, Jessica Garcia and Kristy Bryant. So, right now, we're in our final stages of planning, we actually just met with Paul Smith a couple of weeks ago to finalize details and overall schedule. So, our visit will start that late Sunday afternoon and run into the end of the day, Wednesday, March 23rd. As far as accommodations for the team, they will be staying at the Hilton Garden Inn, front hotel will be providing breakfast and dinner. And schools will provide lunch and snacks, as well as our culinary arts classes will also help with lunch and, and I think different goodies for the, the team. As far as focus areas for the visit, we have our priority areas of growth, which is something we started in 2019, which is the last time that NEAS visited before the decennial visit. We're also going to do meetings with various stakeholders across those four days, which include the board members and different groups from the school. Overall observations of the school, including classroom observation, student-led tour of the building, just to name a few. And then the visit will close out at the end of the day, Wednesday, March 23rd, with the NEAS visiting team, meeting with our faculty and just doing an overview, you know, to reflect on their visit and share all of the experience. So, it's a quick overview of what we're, what we're planning.
Yeah, thank you. So, that's, we're excited about that, that visit coming, coming forward, yeah.
It was fun.
So, we'll have that, yeah, I know, yeah.
Jeff, what can we attend as board members?
Well, the, the committee itself will want to meet with, I think, I'll have to go back to see, I don't know if they want to meet the whole board during that. I think it's, yes, when we have a little bit more detailed information, we'll let you know if you're interested, that'd be great.
Because I can do that, me too.
I think it's two separate, I want to say it's Sunday and I think there's another day.
That's what I thought, it's the other day, Sunday is just kind of the greet, the meet and greet, so, but you're welcome to come to that if you want, we could.
Yeah, I could be, I mean, I know it's family time, but.
Yeah, so that's the typical start to, start timeframes on Sunday afternoons for NEAS. But yeah, we're excited to get that out of the way and then the high school team and everybody involved has done a great job putting that all together, it's a lot of work, that's for sure. So, that's forthcoming and then just to, again, on the 21st of March, which, you know, the Board of Finance presentation is following the same night of a Board of Ed meeting, so we'll have to end up shortening that Board of Ed meeting a little bit and then we'll pick up here and then pick up here to head to Town Hall for seven o'clock for that presentation to the Board of Finance, so hopefully as many of you as possible can make it and we look forward to presenting that and then getting the ball rolling, conversations with Board of Finance. The 21st, that's a, that's a Monday of March, yep, coming up in a couple of weeks, yep. So, and that's, that's all I, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jeff, and Alicia.
Um, yeah, so I had put in the weekly update, a little snapshot for the board on, specific to math, I didn't want to give it all to you at once, so I'm giving it to you in little snippets, but if you have questions about that mid-year assessment data, I know Barry, in particular, you were looking for the high school MTS S program because the last time we highlighted some of the math coaching impact, we didn't have the mid-year data. And so, I just want to highlight that one piece, it was a cohort of 16 students, so with our new certified MTS S math teacher, she was able to move that cohort of students significantly over a very short period of time. That's just a very short summary of the data that I had put in front of you on Friday. And then, one other piece in the middle school, at the middle school level, when we looked at all students in terms of percentage of growth from fall to winter on the screening, the iReady screening for math, we had almost 20% more meet or demonstrate growth this year than last year, now last year was a COVID year. So, we can expect that we would see a better year of growth this year, 20% is a pretty good number, so, yeah. And then at the elementary level, our fourth graders did really well in terms of the percent demonstrating growth at almost, well, don't quote me on it, let me look at it.
Looking that up, Alicia, the slides that Alicia shared, the weekly update we use with the Board of Select as well as past.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, our fourth graders were almost at 80% demonstrating growth, which is a pretty good number. But of course, our third graders were at 56% and our second graders at 61%, so obviously there are areas we still continue to look at and focus on in terms of our work in that area, so I will work to develop some literacy, mid-year assessment data for you, just as a check-in to, like I said, I think less is more over time is better for us and we're not inundated with so many numbers. And then, something I'm looking at right now, I think I was talking to Jill and me at one of our breaks last week, is I want to take a look at the cohort of students who received intervention over the summer as part of our summer instructional program for students and see how they did comparatively in terms of their growth and their, to from fall to winter as compared to some of the students who didn't have or receive intervention. I'm not sure what that, that will look like, but I'm hoping to use that information to drive decision-making for summer programming this summer. So, I said to Jeff, just give me a couple more weeks to look at the numbers and then I will have more information for the board in terms of what we're thinking for summer planning. I know for sure we'll be paralleling our summer rooting program to the, the public library, it's oceans of possibilities, I can't remember if I've mentioned that to you guys yet already, but I'm really excited about that, so that at the very least, we're looking at the numbers to plan moving forward. So, okay.
Just hopes that all the ESY positions as well, so, yeah, so those are out there.
They are, yeah.
Yeah, lots of positions to fill.
Such a special note to all staff in district, you know, to encourage them, but it's also up on the website via Apple pack.
That's right, so.
Yeah. We're rolling right into hiring for extended school year.
But you'll take, right, we'll take new graduates, new graduates.
New graduate.
Am I missing something? I could be confused.
No, just.
We're thinking about the summer program, okay, I thought we had to be teach, they had to be teacher certified, they had to be, okay, that's what I'm saying, recent.
Yep, that's true.
Oh, recent graduates.
There might be, there might be a few of those in the next.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, I, I will spread the word.
Very, yeah.
When I watch presentations, I know that they, the growth you're charting in terms of numbers or how, and so we are now really watching the presentation, I think the greatest figure that is the growth of agency. So, it's, it looks like a lot of times the growth in numbers is actually less than the growth of agency, the growth of agency is what truly drives the numbers. If they were anecdotes or any indication for teachers that you could get.
Sure.
To companion the numbers with, what is the reason the numbers are going forth, I mean, it's, it's not just the teachers saying that that's enough. It's their encouragement for the activities that they were having the students do.
Right.
The group talk, discussions.
The strategy book.
The strategy, that's what they're doing. That's what's driving it, as I saw in the presentation, so any anecdotes to get that, so again, it's just not just presenting the numbers, but presenting the reason.
The story behind it, absolutely.
Get the reason behind the numbers, that is a lot easier to transmit that to other areas, you know, to grow throughout the whole.
Yeah. Good. Great. And then just one last thing, March 11th, Friday is a professional development day for our staff, so students don't have school, but all of our certified staff will be in for professional development. The way the day is organized is there's four 90-minute sessions for teachers with lunch in between in the middle. It is a day of choice for teachers for the most part. And we're, you know, a little bit of mixing of work and play, so we do offer some wellness sessions for teachers throughout the day that they can engage in, we ask that they choose one wellness session as, you know, as an option for them. Then we're not forcing anybody into, into that, but they're, they're welcome to, and I will say that many of them are, are, are taking advantage of, you know, like the walk and talk session where they find a colleague to talk about a problem of practice and walk around the building and talk about it as one of their sessions, so if you see folks out walking, it's because they've chosen that as their, as one of their sessions, but aside from that, we have 12 of our departments coming together to move forward on their curriculum revision process as part of the day. That includes ELA, working with Linda Darcy from Learn on their curriculum revision and putting an equity lens on that. We have math departments coming together vertically. So, we have our algebra teachers from the middle school and high school coming together to talk about algebra program and doing some calibration around their approach in teaching in algebra. We have our four or five teachers coming together to talk about math and math instruction, best practices around math instruction, and that's facilitated by our math coaches. That's been a very long time coming and I'm really excited for that conversation to happen. There's some sessions on the math workshop at the elementary level, we have some, a session being offered by the coaches on structured literacy, there's some blended learning structure, um, sessions in terms of the instructional tools that we have to support our ELL populations, that was something that our teachers were asking for, so we designed a session around that. Our integrated pre-K is going to be looking at their curriculum and diving deep into their philosophy around play-based learning and what that means for them for integrated pre-K. And we even have opportunities for teachers to, to do that, oh my god. Somebody, I'll be, to design their own session, so if there was a session that didn't appeal to them or wasn't directly aligned to their professional goals, they had the opportunity to, to design their own and had to back that up with rationale as to how it aligned to their professional development this year. So, just a kind of broad stroke overview for you on what's to come on Friday, I'm really looking forward to it and hopefully I'll include some pictures for you in the weekly update.
Thanks.
Okay.
How's morale, Alex?
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm going to turn to my building admin and ask them that question.
Well, yeah, they're all smiling, yeah, so.
They look happy.
Before, before you turn it, I just want to say kudos to you for doing that because that's joint agency, what Barry talks about all the time and you're allowing that, and I know when I was in the trenches, I had a student who was an elective mute or selective mute and of course there was nothing available for me to figure out what to do for this particular child to try to get, I had a couple actually him and her to talk to me or to be part of the community, so actually I was living in Lincoln, Nebraska, which the university got some good documents that would help me, you know, we didn't have the internet back in those days, so kudos to you because you're doing the right thing, you're allowing them to voice what they want, execute a plan and then find learning and then share it, so, good job.
Thank you.
So, morale.
Morale, yeah. All right, Jason?
So, the reason I bring this up is because we just had a team leader meeting today. The whole meeting, although we were talking about issues that were, you know, that we need to find solutions to, we talked about COVID, we talked about COVID, we talked about Zoom, talked about school-based issues that we talked about two years ago. It was absolutely refreshing, talked about the problems of school, because those exist and we need to manage those on a day-to-day basis. So, it was, you know, the last conversations we've had have been all about the business of school and to me that was, it was great, it was just, you don't mind those problems, we have other problems that we're here to solve, so.
Right, yeah.
I think the morale is, I think everyone's just taking a step back saying, oh, you know, this is what we're all about, so you know, the morale's typical for this time of year, a normal school year, so that's a good thing, you know, where we were stress teacher evaluation, supervision, the SPACs coming up, all the things that we have in flow with on a normal school year, so I was really pleased watching that meeting.
Jason, do you recognize anybody?
Do we, we rec, yeah, I think we.
They take their masks off and all of a sudden you see their face and you're like, oh.
Well, yeah, and I think too, we can hear the inflections in people's voices, then we can see their reaction to a state, I make, make or someone else, so I just think that's changed a lot, but we're also being very, very mindful of honoring folks that want to continue where they're at. We go on the news and we talk about it, we put it in the parent letter last week, so, you know, everyone's got a different inflection point where they're ready that said maybe not use that, so it just feels, at least for me, the most normal that's felt in two years, almost to the day.
Yeah.
So, that's been.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Are questions for Annalise? Thanks, Annalise.
You're welcome.
Yes, she said, yeah, yeah. So, that closes the administration reports, moving to committee reports. We had FFO last Monday.
We did.
But we didn't report out on it.
Because we didn't have a meeting.
We didn't have, right, we had a special, yeah.
Yeah, so we had, we talked about creative play school with Kim Davis, we talked about the tuition rates that will not be going up at all, they'll be staying the way that they are. Creative has worked their way out of the red and we are in the black, which is a wonderful thing. We had made some, well, we talked about the fun balance and how, who makes decisions and that type of thing for that program. We did talk about the playground and possibly some upgrades or who takes care of that and some suggestions, which was great. We also talked about supernovas in the program at Flanders and that they're going on memory, so if I forget anything, you can just pop right in. Was tuition-based, of course, in that.
Um, was tuition-based, of course, and that, that tuition is going to go up a little bit, uh, to be more competitive, right, with other surrounding districts. Um, the expansion of their program as well, which is fantastic. We talked about advertising and also fun balance, um, and all of those things were fantastic. We talked about feel, we had Chris Lund, and we also had Chris Urban come in in regards to the, the amount of money that he needs to basically spend and all these different things. Um, and of course, that was to come back here to this meeting, which you guys did, and it was great.
And then policy.
We covered it on that one, but then.
Okay, so that closes the reports and on to board comments.
I have one, just real quick. Is, is spread kindness, I just saw that in a couple of the cards from the students, and it seems like in the schools I've been in, it's been everywhere, spread kindness. Is this like a state program or is it?
Be Kind Movement, is it?
Maybe that's what it is, but it's been like, spread kindness, and what have you done to be kind today? But that's what it is?
It's the Be Kind Movement, yeah. It was an initiative that came out of the Sandy Hook Fund Foundation, I believe.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure how many of the buildings are actually implementing the Be Kind Movement, but they could be.
So how long's it been there?
Yep, we do that in, uh, art as well.
Yes, I saw that too.
And so we, you know, paying those, well, this is the first few, um, that particular three goals, but, um, we're trying to stay at our school as well, and we incorporate that usually down.
It's amazing, I just say, seeing it everywhere, and I'm thinking, these children are seeing it.
I have a video that, um, Jeff, if you saw it.
Yeah, today, yeah.
So I think you share those.
Yeah, but every weekly update, they're, yeah.
No doubt, come out Friday.
Isn't that a great thing?
It is amazing.
To be doing, for sure. Need adults.
True.
Eric, is to, um, I don't know, we have this, uh, gender-gone company stating that always, look at the agenda, I'd be background stuff. And I think I really pumped up with ideas for how we get, uh, we'll get some issues and ideas that are going to help us as a district become on a contract, come on the panel meeting, I think very serious, uh, it turned out that I had the same level of, uh, who, yeah. Let me run through two items quickly, and we could sort of, uh, a little huge discussion. Hope that people find that compelling enough that we actually will get, uh, included in the agenda. First, uh, a good start when I look at the, uh, charter for the facilities, asset management, I, uh, because of the strong language, uh, that's made it very, quite an accurate. You know, it was, uh, repeated the word, the charge, the first charge, the consideration of schedule for student, there's, they're going to do this, they're going to do this, they're going to do this, there's a bit right here, the charge that you make, very important. And I just picked up on that because a lot of other boards I've worked with understood that the committees are the wheelhouse of the action items, a place where the board work gets done. Now, and this is, the language of this committee is really, really great for what, it's like a template, it's a model for the task orientation for board committee. Then I looked at the, uh, the policy committee, and again, we get a very good statement there of task orientation where they're, you can see where J and A committee done the draft vision, draft policies, and recommending actions to the board. So they're basically, the committee, they do stuff, and they're tasked with bringing something to the board. You look at the FFO committee, it's the same kind of task, it's, it's a little bit dampened out for the college, look, but still, you get this, review and discuss, uh, on contracts, stuff like vendors, you know, the bridge should bring things to the board that's capable of reviewing and approval. So basically, FFO is back there, they look at things, they talk through all, and I'm saying for tuition things, whatever. You know, they say, we should look at this, let's bring it to the board for reviewing and approval. Then when you look at the athletic, the DA committee, um, it's, there is really no charge, there's no action. It's basically stated as review and discuss, and there's nothing that is in the policy or the goal of that committee that says they're never going to do anything other than review and discuss. There's no language, uh, that any or similar, all those other committees I've talked about. So I think that, uh, if we want to keep the DA committee just as kind of a show and tell, review and discuss, said, no, there are any actions coming out of it, yeah, just keep the policy as it is. I would prefer, suggest that as, uh, then I don't have to, uh, so for the board, if we want to have actions coming out of the DA committee, we have to figure out what that committee is to do and to figure out what is the charge, the purpose of that committee, and what are the things that that committee should be doing to bring to the board. Right now, I think that's one item I think is very, uh, is important for, for teachers. The second thing that, uh, really strikes me is, uh, so I was looking at the, I don't know how many of you read the K journal, but, uh, I was reading it, and there's a section in there, uh, with, uh, charge the board chairs, and it talked about what the board should do, the top three items. I just have to note, first was focus your board on student achievement, what your students need first. Make sure that all the decisions are reported while you're waiting to shoot. And I took those, and I looked at the agendas that you had as a board, and it's like, we, those items don't pop up. And I also looked at the number of items we have in, as there is a future discussion, that kind of exists way over there. They never, ever, ever get back into the agenda. And so it brings to me the whole line of, how is a board, then we figure out a process so we get agendas that are not reactive, but more proactive on doing the thing we have to do to bring our district forward. So, what do we do about the agendas, and how can we as a board have, I would very much like this to have a discussion about how we form an agenda, and what kind of topics we want on the agenda, so that we can make sure that our items on the agenda actually are working to bring the board and the district forward. So, those are the two items I, we put about, we don't have to discuss more than going for future discussion. And I just hope that someday, uh, they will show up as items on the, uh, agenda if you want to discuss.
Thanks, Barry. Kate?
Um, is this room used for other things than board?
Multiple things.
Multiple things, okay. Um, I just, I, I just am so heartened by these beautiful cards or, and, and art and letters and things. So thank you to all of you out there who made this possible.
Yes.
Because I know there was a lot of work that went into this, but I know I was in one school district, and the board of that room had some art that was the kids' artwork in the room where they actually met, and it just, it just brings it back, I guess, to what we're doing and seeing these comments, and there's little illustrations, and it's just such a beautiful reminder that that's why we're here. And if there'd be some way that we could have, like an artist, a class of a month or something, and actually things displayed, but if this room is used for other purposes, and maybe that's out of line or not appropriate, but, um, just to send a thank you back to the faculty and to the kids, and, you know, they appreciate us, but gosh, we really appreciate them, because we wouldn't be here for them, so.
We will hang someone up at central office, we've been doing, back to, got back to putting student artwork up and inviting parents in to central office to come see their works, we've had some parents come through with their child.
See them.
So, yeah, it's, that's, well, we stopped through, you can see, but, but you're right, it's, yeah.
Just put them on the website, too.
Yeah, we can take pictures of them and put them on the website, yeah. Yeah.
One, I would like to put in a request for us to go back to schools for our meetings. When I first started, we used to go into the schools for board event meetings once a month. I think it's a great.
You just have to figure out the line, yeah, that's the catch.
I would like to, yeah, see if we could do that again, because I know that the students loved it, teachers liked it, and I loved getting into the schools and seeing what students were doing.
Oh, it's great.
Um, two, this is my favorite month, I love work appreciation month, because I love it when you guys bring in those cards. Every single year, I love this month, because I love to see all the cards, they're my favorite cards. And then, three, I'm just reminding everybody that the Miracle Weeds Play for a Miracle event is April first. If anyone wants to go, it's at Mokegan Sun, and you can buy tickets at mlsct.org.
What is the event again, I'm sorry?
It's our Play for a Miracle Gala, it's our big fundraiser for the year.
Okay.
Um, and it's been postponed for two years, so.
And the price of the ticket?
It is one fifty a person and fifty dollars for kids eighteen and under. April first, I will meet them.
I'm saying one thing. Um, I'm just, in response to what, in response to what Barry said, I've been thinking as he's been saying that, and most, we are pretty proactive in our committees in the sense of like, in the sense of what we do with, obviously, policy and obviously, uh, the FFO, but I'm just thinking about what, I mean, what the AAA did. And I'm not saying anyone's wrong or right or whatever, but, I mean, what we're, I mean, it's pretty clear what we're supposed to do on the FFO and on the, on the, how, of the policy committee, but I'm just wondering what clear, what, what are, what's the AAA? I always enjoy going, I learned something about what was going on in the school, but I'm just wondering, what do you guys want from, from that committee or us? Because I'm thinking it would be, let's use it, we got a group of people that, let's use it and get some brain power in there and get some fit recommendations, or maybe.
Well, again, yeah, now that we're coming, I feel like we're coming down, I want to say we're coming off of COVID.
Oh, yeah, true.
You gotta remind you, the last two years have been hell.
Oh, I know, I know, I know.
So, you know, you haven't been pushing teachers to the degree that I think.
You're right.
You know, and it's easy to sit here and say, you know, we should be doing this, we should be doing that, but, you know, we've got staff members out there who, you know, we talked about morale, morality, yeah, I hope it's getting better, but they are still struggling. So those pieces will come.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I just want to, I just want to add that, you know, the committees, they're not, they're not designed, or at least that I'm, under my understanding, they're not designed to push forward, um, personal agendas or any type of personal type of, um, agenda piece. So I'm a little bit curious as to where this is going in the conversation. So I'm really looking forward to maybe having a conversation about it, because I'm, I'm wondering myself. I, I am, I'm, I'm starting to wonder, because I'm listening to almost like an orchestration of different agenda items that specific board members may want to see or like to be pushed through, and it, maybe those committees might be looking, maybe being looked at as a catalyst to do that. And, and I don't think that that's what they're designed for, but maybe they are, I don't know. I don't think it's going to be, I think it will be a good discussion to have.
I do.
That way there's clarity on, you know, what, I guess, the expectation is and that type of thing, and, and have maybe verbiage, that way people have a clear understanding. That's all I have.
Thanks, Kevin, others?
First, I'm just thinking, oh, can you just, I just have a question, um, the action items of the committees, does the, do the committees generally, uh, they come from central office, what's the flow of information, content that the committee should be focusing?
I think it depends on the topic. Um, sometimes comes to the committee, it's much easier, uh, with FFO, because it's money-related. We have to push those things forward, we need approvals, um, because, you know, specific policy around that. So it really depends on the topic, but, um, you know, I think, uh, you know, Barry shared the different charters. It's something we can go back and we can look at, you know, as well. You know, our forward movement, you know, we're already starting to think about strategic planning, got to get back on track, and, and that is the plan. Uh, it's just, you know, we're finally getting to the point of being able to do that, we haven't been there. So, um, you just have to, you know, a little patience is, is where we're at right now, so we're getting there.
Just say one more thing, I did not appear, I did not want to appear like I'm trying to push on the teachers. I understand it's been difficult as whatever for the past two years. I know what it's, how it's affected my personal life, but to be responsible for, well, for up to twenty-five other people's lives, it's got to be difficult. So I'm just concerned of that, that is not what I, that's not what I'm wishing for. I don't, I would want to be on this board if that's what, what my agenda was, but I, my agenda is just getting us back on track.
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't think that's a bad personal agenda.
That's where I'm at as well.
Okay, all right, so just.
I'm just trying to protect the people that are out there in our district that have worked so darn hard, you know, last two years, and, you know, I've seen so many people at my doorstep in my office, tears, struggling, you know.
I agree.
So it's, it's, you know, a little bit of frustration on my part, too, which I'm venting a little bit, and I shouldn't do that.
You have every right. Where do you vent here then?
That's kind of where, where I'm at, that, you know, we will get there, um, and that's the work that will continue.
Okay, well, I just don't want it ever thought that the board or any member on the board doesn't support the teachers, I think.
Oh, yeah, we're all here for them.
We are definitely all here for them.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion, teacher.
I second it.